I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Considered republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone. All right, do the bills.
At this time, I move to pay the bills that have been properly presented and reviewed.
I will second that.
Commissioner Florida, second. We even paid the bills, Commissioner House.
Yes.
Commissioner Stein.
Yes.
Yes. And from the Assistant Office, we have an report.
Here. Billy J. Dinnor. Billy J. and Amanda Dinnor.
Does that Commissioner Florida through the report?
Yes.
Commissioner Stein.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, I bring this down to our first appointment, Commissioner Dwayne Hamilton. With Matthew and Aggressive Fuel Credit.
Kind of good stuff.
Kind of stuff.
Um, we'll start off with the fuel credit application. We went with, uh, we knew we were initially with Wax.
Right.
And then went with Fuel Man. Well, since we pulled away with Wax, Wax has offered us a, uh, a, so we're looking at that. This needs your permission to have the application. It's just kind of a credit application, I think. We're pretty little. Any problem with that, I just need your.
How much of the better?
How much, yeah, I was gonna ask. Savings savings or is it a better program? I mean, you want to say.
Thing, thing is same with Wax is there are more stations to take.
Okay.
There was initially a two dollar per car per month fee. Um, the negotiations, they haven't agreed to waive that.
Okay.
But it gives us more of up and riding.
Okay.
Fuel Man would ran into a few issues, doesn't it? Some of the things up are, or some of the stations broke down when they can't.
Right.
Um, but you know, also except we need to be cautious where prices work. The station, where stations work usually.
That station's clear too.
But anyway, um, and then there's a certain percent, uh, what's the name of this? Out here at Bell Camer, Valer.
Valero.
Yeah, there's another eight cents a gallon discount if you guys have stopped.
Okay, I hear cer- certain programs work at certain stations.
Yeah. Yeah, that's kind of thing. So that, that was a big stick that the one pulled up before. I was on Fuel Man because of the two dollar per car per month fee. And they agreed to waive that.
So I think it will be a good move all around.
Oh, rather than being.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
Do we need an official motion to just to start an application process because what?
Well, I still want to do that.
Oh, no, I didn't, we didn't, he just asked.
Right.
We don't need to do that, we just might as well say, the quarter didn't do great thing.
Scott, bless this.
Um, budget revisions, starting out with, um, um, moving, um, four fifty-nine and two twenty-two. Um, that's, uh, just a terminal short on, um, some due to some things we need to pay. That was the amount fifteen hundred dollars, that one.
You said a good budget this again.
I'm sorry.
Um, that one's for fifteen hundred dollars. The other one is thirteen thousand three twenty-eight, um, from four fifty-nine and two sixteen. That was to pay, uh, maintenance on the power phone bill that we did last year. But wasn't got to live into that.
Okay, so, um, thirteen thousand, I don't see.
I don't see it.
Um.
I'm sorry. So how many budget revisions do you have total?
I have three and Nick has one.
Okay, we have four.
Four.
But they're not the same, make some changes.
I, I printed the ones that I got from Lois. The only one we were missing.
Send me the twenty-five thousand.
Four, four, five.
You probably have Nick.
You don't have that. You don't have that.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, that's the one you don't have.
Then what, what additional budget revision do we have?
That one.
Four, four here, that would be five.
Well, he said he had about.
Yeah.
He said that.
Right, yeah. Oh, we have five total.
I've got, no, I've got.
Here, Duane, come up here.
No, I've got four, Nick has one.
Oh, that's just the five plus four, one from Nick and then. That's what I was trying to say. It's four altogether.
So you have that one. The other one is to move from regular times to overtime amount twenty-five thousand dollars for overtime costs. And the other one is a check, this is actually intentional fraud. Take that O one, three, two, oh, five, where we put the insurance check into line I of two seventeen dash oh, five to pay. Then the one I have is to take, um, five twenty-six ninety-nine O seven, three, three, dash two, two, one, which is training the education. That is in budget. And put it into seven, three, three, dash three, five, three, which is computer software for everything else. And it actually went up a little bit this year, we weren't expecting, or we realized when we did budget last year. And that's first increase it's had in years.
Three, yeah.
Well, at this time.
Well, we have a couple more. I, I have a question. All right, thanks, guys. All right. Bring this down to your next appointment, Chris Jennings, representative of the Preston Matt Club, request for funding. Good morning, Craig.
Good morning. Okay, good morning all, thanks for allowing us to come here today. Uh, just wanted to give you a quick update, I don't know if you've been up there lately to look for property or buy the place, but, uh, so far between, uh, in-kind donations, actual cash handed over and, uh, just some sweat equity up there. We have somewhere around, now I haven't totaled up completely, but somewhere around six hundred thousand dollars in the project up there right now. If you take in the account of the, uh, oh, the excavation is done, raise that up approximately ten, twelve foot, uh, to make it level with the parking lot up there. Uh, that the school board was gracious enough, when we were out asking for funding, uh, we were able to work with them up there. We don't have our MOU with them yet, but a handshake deal that basically, the way they allowed us to orient the building up against that parking lot, I believe gave us around sixty to seventy paved parking spots to be able to be used for buildings. So our sidewalk will meet right up against the, uh, uh, paving, what's known probably as the student parking up there.
Oh, yeah.
Add that, um, and, you know, we didn't really have, have a way to put the price on that at one point, so I went and actually requested it. Just a quote from the contractor who actually paid that, I said, listen, no excavation, but let's say you had to come loose from topsoil, do this, put in the proper amount of this, that, whatever. And, uh, they actually came back and said, to get that many parking spots, be about a hundred fifty, a hundred fifty-five thousand dollar project up there. So the school board did do that, uh, part of that MOU too, uh, will be that the junior high and high school wrestling clubs will get use of the gym up there for our, in allowing them to use the wrestling facility for practice. The club will get to have their, um, uh, tournament up there without cost. So that's with or without a levy. That was just one of the things we wanted to shore up with them depending on whether the levy passed or not. But it's a huge expense for the club and something that usually, you know, is one of the biggest fundraiser, a big chunk of that got hit if we had to rent the school. So in some trading and some willing and dealing up there, we, we've got that done. So if you've been up by, we have the whole structure up there, it's seventy-two hundred square foot structure. We're in the process now, the structure itself's up. We don't have the floor in yet, that's the next thing, probably the next big thing that'll happen. Uh, probably won't see much happening with it, but the floor will get poured, uh, we're hoping to get that in for somewhere around thirty thousand dollars. And then what we're asking help for, or help with from the commission, is the HVAC for the facility. And, uh, we're coming and asking for thirty-five thousand dollars to help with that. Uh, that should get us through the, uh, main phases of everything. And then we'll probably have a fundraiser just to round out, uh, what we'll call the finishing touches, that type of thing to the building. Uh, but what we're looking at and what we thought that we'd offer to the commission, to the county with help, is not just asking for, for funding for nothing. Uh, the type of HVAC that we're putting in it, uh, we, uh, we'll actually have air conditioning in it, uh, and gas heat. It's actually two large, uh, oh, what they call rooftop units, they'll be on the ground, but they call them rooftop units, it's all contained outside. Uh, so during that, I asked Duane, I said, hey, I want to be able to offer something, we want to be able to go back to the commission and offer them something. And I said, we've got this set up, it's gonna have four full restrooms in it, so that we shower, bathroom sink. Uh, I said, if they can help us out with this, I want to be able to offer them the ability, that if they ever needed it, here's a heating, uh, shelter or cooling shelter, if we get, you know, one of these deratio's that come through in the middle of summer and it's a hundred and five, we can get people in this facility and do that. And, and we were even, uh, willing to help, uh, put the switch in, uh, Duane's already checked out to see if their generators could run that facility. So that facility could really be ran, uh, without power in the area, i- if, you know, we were able to do that wire correctly and do the things that need to be done with it. When we were first here, we ex, we, we talked about different things that could be, uh, happen, uh, or different groups. And we've had a national group, uh, already to reach out to us, I don't want to say who they are yet, but I don't have anything, I, I don't want other communities buying for them. But, uh, we've had a national wrestling group that's asked if they could make their own mats up here. So you're looking at a couple times a year, a, a weekend or so, that that facility's gonna have people in from all over the state coming in. That's just one group, we're, we're expecting to get several others. There'll be camps, there'll be overnight camps, things like that, that are, that are gonna be housed there as well. A lot of times those bring parents and everybody else to come with them, so hopefully that fills up the hotels, get an area as well. Uh, but we already have, in that community, if you're, you're part of it, that's sort of the big talk in West Virginia, i- is what we're going up there right now with that facility. So what you'll see if you walk into it when it's done, is there will basically be seventy-two hundred square feet of open space minus, uh, one small room for our utility type room where we're bringing everything in. We'll have a room beside it that we call training room, but in the instance of any type of emergency or something where you, where the county would need that for a shelter, it could also be a medical type room. Uh, you know, where it's got some privacy to it, you can bring people in and check them out, that type of thing. Then you'll have four restrooms, uh, individual restrooms that will have shower, bathroom, the whole nine yards in it. Uh, and then off to the other end, there'll be some office, just basically spaced off in there. That way if coaches are meeting or practicing, high school coaches, you can just sort of separate yourself, uh, out from the whole group that's there.
A lot of good stuff. Um, I do have a couple questions, so how much in monetary donations has the Matt Club?
You know, the wrong person to ask that, but I know we've had several twenty-five thousand dollar donations, fifty thousand dollar donations, so I'm guessing probably two fifty in actual cash written checks.
And then a bunch of in-kind.
In-kind, almost major more, and more in-kind to come on that. I, I mean, if you look at it, i- if, if the school would have bid that out, or if you guys would have bid that out, even at a hundred dollars a square foot, which nobody, that's seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So, you know, I, I'm thinking, like, at two hundred a square foot, you're looking at a one point five million dollar facility up there that the, the county's getting its hands on. In part, thanks to you all for letting us, allowing us to add land up there to do it with, uh, you know, like I said, just some finishing touches that we're hoping to get to, to get across the building.
I like the idea of the shelter, but how would you go about that with an agreement with the county? Like, there would have to be.
Same way you do with the Civic Center, you have several of those.
Yeah, well, Maple, that Maple, uh, Maple Springs church.
Well, the big thing, the big thing is what this is, is the transfer switch. That means we can, you know, power out as we can get up the generator up the top.
Yep.
Otherwise, we gotta get electricians in, hardwired in.
Right.
You know, that's a big benefit right there.
Yeah.
And the shower facilities, you know, and all, that's what I asked him, I said, well, that shower, you know, most of the time.
Yeah.
Other than a cooking facility, which is most time the food's brought in anyway.
Yeah, they have a concrete.
And we wanted to stay away from that, just 'cause that then changes our facility and how you have to, uh, you know, if you have cooking in there, then it's a whole different, for a public building, it's a whole different.
I think the, the MOU would have to, I mean, obviously, if you have any sort of a disaster where you're trying to shelter people, probably most extracurriculars are going to be canceled, and so the facility is available anyway.
Well, you know, it's not.
But just a, just an MOU that in those events, that, you know, we might have to use the facility and we might have to cancel.
But you're exactly right, if we don't have, uh, electric, we're not bringing.
Well, no, yeah.
You got, the, the county's got much bigger issues at that time. And, and it might not even be something, you know, you know, we're thinking big power outlets, that type of thing. Not necessarily that this falls on the back of the commission, but, you know, it wasn't too long ago that we had a, a school, an entire school that was shut down because of, uh, some fumes that came in through the HVAC system. You do have three schools that are pretty close by that, hey, if all else fails, we have a seventy-two hundred square foot facility, we can at least go get there and dismiss people as we see what happens. In, in some type of orderly manner, you're not standing out in the rain if that happens. Uh, you know, most days during the school, especially that's, it's, it's, there's not gonna be anybody in there, 'cause all people would be there, ought to be in class a- at that point, uh, as well. Any other questions?
Thirty thousand dollar ask.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty-five, my apologies, what would the timeline on that be, like, how soon?
Yeah, what do you want?
Obviously, i- i- as soon as humanly possible, but the idea of, you know, the idea of it's on the come, we'll, we want to wait till, you know, if you can give us an idea, if you would agree upon that, uh, we would figure out how to make that work, if that makes sense to you, you know?
Yeah, sponsor.
Craig, do you have an actual, uh, quote on that HVAC? The best ask from the commission is to take care of the HVAC, which you're estimating at thirty-five thousand. Are you?
Well, I would like to say yes, but again, we're dealing with so much in-kind from the community, uh, that I don't have a quote for that. Now, part of that, I would say, when, when I say that, I need to caution myself here, those switches are really expensive.
They're very expensive, yeah.
Uh, so I would say thirty of it, we would say we need to push towards the HVAC. Now, if we come under that, and I say the switch is seventy-five hundred, we'd be willing to take five grand of that and put towards the switch, the other thirty for the HVAC. Now, let's say it comes in twenty-seven five, and the switch is seventy-five hundred, okay, we'll call that wash at that time. But we, I, I don't want to say, yeah, we'll do that, and then, well, these are fifteen thousand dollar switches.
Can you just miss the hard price of the HVAC and the switch?
Yeah, well, I, I can, once I get that, I don't have that.
But you're saying if HVAC was in-kind?
When I say in-kind.
It's probably.
All the materials and everything, nobody's done a big.
Now, I'm glad that has to be, it's, it's gonna be, not coming in and actually hooking stuff up.
Yes, and a lot of what we did, there's some duct work that goes with that, and the guy comes in and says, look, it's probably, we're probably gonna have forty hours in doing this or that. A lot of the work that we've gotten up there is people come in and go, look, my guys cost me twenty-three fifty an hour with this. They were here for forty hours, there was five of them, here's what the cost is for me to walk away from this and not have a dime of my pocket. Well, if we hired them, they'd be charging us fifty, sixty, seventy dollars an hour for those guys, they're letting us have it cost.
Per cost.
That's why it's so hard to come up, and a lot of people don't want to really write that on a piece of paper and hand it out, especially when it's coming to public, it's gonna be in the paper. They give you a bid, uh, down the street or for someone else's home, they don't, they, they don't want to see, but you can do that for twenty-three fifty an hour, like, you know? So that's why it's hard to get that done. But, uh, I, I do know that we've shopped around to find the units that we originally thought were gonna be thirty-four thousand dollars, just for the two units. We were able to get them, uh, we have a price on them right now for somewhere in the ballpark of twenty. And that's to give a, and that's assuming ten more for duct work and.
Yes, the labor, yeah.
That's true. I really like the direction you guys are heading, but I would agree with Mr. Stein, if we could get some kind of hard ass.
Some.
That's what it'd be your ballpark, twenty for the units, ten for the installation, and then an extra five is towards the switch that, obviously, when we have our, uh, attritions up there, that'll just get thrown in to wire in, but I, I don't have a hard part in that switch. It's not that easy to find a, uh, three-phase, two-hundred-and-thirty-volt switch out there. Uh, but I do got guys looking into it. But I didn't want to wait till you guys are completely through your budget process to come and, and get that in there. But that, that, that's the numbers you're looking at, without me breaking it down or bringing you in a piece of paper. It is thirty thousand dollars for the HVAC, five towards the switch.
All right, well, we'll definitely have to take a look at funding and.
Where we have, where we have to pull it from or anything.
And I can probably give you a little closer detail with this, twenty-nine, nine, eighty-five, thirty-seven cents is.
The, the better, more information we got, the better off we are. Because we're, we're after to look around, but see what we can pull this around.
Sure.
I will say with your different groups that you haven't got in here yet, talk to the CDB over there, 'cause they can help with some of the, logistics with that, and that may, that may sweep the pocketing over here, so.
Just one last question, timeline on the project, I'm just curious.
We're hoping to have kids wrestling in it in May, whether we have any HVAC or not. We'll have the floor, we're hoping to get the floor in by the end of April, really at that point, we can get people in that facility at that point.
Like soft opening, I guess.
Yeah, you know, and even at that point, we may not have all the interior.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but at least you get it right.
But once the floor is in there, you know, and, and we looked at options to, uh, you know, maybe go a little softer, a little cheaper with the, the heating of it. But there's no cheap way to cool it. And it's not that we want to really have it cool or cold in there, but we need to condition the air. And that was, you know, these systems are, do that, where if we just had the old, uh, I didn't remember the name back, those Resnar heaters that, you know, you bolt up and put in the corner, that had been good enough for us. But we have a nice facility up there, and we were like, look, let's, let's see if we can't get some help and put the proper type HVAC. So that way if you do have fifty people spending the night in there.
Yeah.
It's turning the right air around, and it's comfortable, it's not a, uh, you know, emergency. And, and it's one of those things, it's, i- it's way cheaper to do at this point than it's gonna be, you know, after.
Well, yeah, if we do it now, ahead of time, you don't have to worry about going in and.
Right, and, and, and that facility should be twenty-five years before there's really much done to it after, after we did that with it. And there is a garage door inside, too, Duane, so, uh, you know, if, if for whatever reason you back a truck up to it, you get cops out or patients out or in or whatever, it, it is, uh, you know, ready for you to do that.
One, one thing, and this is completely off topic of the ask, but one thing I would personally like to see, because I've been involved in a lot of nonprofit youth organizations, um, that have been tasked with maintenance of different types of facilities and whatnot, is I would like to see a maintenance plan of some sort for the building through the years and, and how we're gonna get to that. Just because in twenty-five years, when there's a need, we don't, you know, we can't project those things out.
There's absolutely no way it'll cost more than what it was to maintain that old barn that's up there.
Sure.
And they did that for a couple decades now, that's.
But just because when you move on and you're not part of it.
You know, it, it's an all metal building, uh, there's really not, your HVAC, you know, it, it's, the insulation might want to degrade. The building itself, you know, those ropes out along, they last, they last, uh, you know, but there's really not much, it's, it's pretty, I don't know what the term would be, but it's a.
It's a maintenance.
Yeah, I mean, we, we're, we're looking at it because that's an issue, not only that, you have seventy-two hundred square foot building, that's a lot to do anything with.
Well, yeah.
Whether it's, you know.
Put a new roof on it or.
Put a new roof on it, the whole nine yards, but that, uh, you know.
Well, I'm just saying, when, when you move on and when Mr. Turner's no longer engaged and, you know, as people age through, if the people coming in have an idea of how to keep the nonprofit documents up to date and.
Sure.
All of those things, maintenance is the same, you know.
Well, I'd say Buddy will probably get off that board by the time we put him in the ground.
I'm sure you're right.
So, we will have that in there as long as that's.
And he's orders, I sure will make sure it's written down correctly so that.
You know, he has over the years, he's ran that, you know, honestly, I, I, I remember when Mel was here and we always talked about, you know, the, these different organizations and everything, and, and he'd always say, watch for this, look for this, and Buddy does a good job, that whole crew does really. And they raised a lot of funds to, to pay for stuff. I mean, the, the Matt Club themselves, I think, has put several thousand dollars towards this in cash.
When you start getting, when you can get this up and running, you get, build up your clientele, that's gonna build up that revenue.
Well, we've had, we've had, uh, different wrestlers, when I say wrestlers, guys that were Olympic gold medalists who go around to clinics, uh, world team guys. We've had several, we've had a group from, uh, that is always looking for a place to come down, out of New York, uh, that has reached out to us. So we're getting a bunch of that down here now. I, I don't know that, you know, you bring fifteen guys down from New York and, and, you know, our guys go up to meet, they have to see new faces, new techniques and things. You know, they'll probably sleep on the mat and sleep in the back, so that, that, but their parents will pick up hotel rooms, they'll have, will have to get that type of stuff catered. So there's a lot that may not seem like much, but you bring fifty new people in for a weekend, you know, that's, that's fifty meals out of one of their own restaurants three times a day, uh, there, there is, uh, something to that, that, some.
Oh, yeah. All right, anyone else anywhere?
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, I'll try to give you guys something, a little, little punishment.
Yeah, I'll be honest with you.
The main thing is for waiting for the placement switch.
Gotcha.
See if I actually.
Yeah, it's hard to say what.
I asked for thirty-five, I have no idea, but I'm hoping to put five towards that and then.
Yeah. All right.
All right, thank you guys, take care.
All right, at this time, I want to make a motion.
At this time, I make a request for minutes for March twelve, twenty twenty-two.
Thomas.
Yes.
Yes.
At this time, I make a request for settlement less for March eleven, twenty twenty-four through March fifteenth.
Second.
For a second, three minutes. State settlements, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Stein.
Yes.
P I V.
I move to dispense with the readings and proceedings and vacation and enter the mental record on an open court session through March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four through Wednesday, March twentieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Commissioner Florida, second to accept a proceeding, dispensable through reading, Commissioner Stein.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Yes. Do you share your commission of business and do not see the sheriff?
And we still do not have.
You still do not have.
An official, um.
Statements that are signed yet?
I don't have one.
Uh?
I don't have one.
You have your ZI.
We don't have a year-end settlement, and we don't have signed monthly financial statements.
Yeah, I haven't heard from him this morning.
What's that too?
I, I haven't heard from him. I had not seen email. Uh, today is the day that Dan is supposed to be here, so they could be out there.
That's what I call check, check.
Okay, let's check on them.
I can check on that, because I'm supposed to meet with Dan if he's here.
And maybe.
What was that date? Yeah, maybe. What was that, you're supposed to be with the sheriff today? No, no, I'm supposed to, Dan is supposed to be here from, for their.
Compiled technologies.
One of the compiled technologies, right? Um, and so we'll sit, we'll check base with him, but I haven't received no update as of yet. All right. Definitely need that. New business, society for the preservation of a room house lease. Okay, you should have a substantial document.
Yeah.
In front of you with that.
I was looking at.
Mo- multiple letters from Rosemary. I actually thought they were gonna be here.
I thought so too, but it's, it is what it is.
What is it, they? Is, is that something we would, we would like them to come and?
Boy.
Do a formal presentation of them?
I do, I think there are a couple of questions, um, last year by first year commission, did we renew? I mean, I know it's a thirty-year lease, but it's a year, year renewal, did we renew it last year? I, I don't think we did, I know it's a.
I don't recall, I know it's supposed to be each year, but I don't recall, or if we treat it honestly.
That's fine.
So, well, yeah, it's something we, we have to do each year, because it is counting a property.
I personally would like them to come, to come. I personally would like them to come, to come appreciate everything they do in the community, but we do have to look at county needs and projections in the future.
I, I'm happy to reach out to them and sort of see if they can come next week. Right, because next, well, yeah, next year, next year, this thirty-year lease will be up. So, you know.
I have to look at the actual lease, the terminology doesn't sound right to me. How do you have a thirty-year, thirty-year lease that is renewable every year, I guess?
It's, it's, I, I, I don't know if it's how true of a lease it is, I haven't looked at it for a long time. I think it's more of an agreement.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, more than it is a lease, if that makes sense.
Let's get the documents pulled and then just look at this next week.
Yeah, let's do that.
I was just under the assumption that we.
I, I was as well. So that's fine, we'll do that. All right. Applications used that county courthouse lawn. And you said, Commissioner Smith, that this comes from you?
Yep. All right. This is something that is brought forward usually annually for the National Day of Prayer. And we have an application here for the National Day of Prayer Task Force to utilize the courthouse lawn for a gathering to observe the National Day of Prayer. That day is May second, two thousand twenty-four, from eleven a.m. to one-thirty p.m. It's a Thursday, it's the date of the request. The contact person is Vicki Hammond. So at this time, I move that we approve the application for the use of the courthouse lawn on May second, two thousand twenty-four for that, the observance of the National Day of Prayer.
Commissioner for a second to approve this application on the President, President's sign, National Day of Prayer. Commissioner Sten?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Just a quick point of question, I'm going to send an email to the judge just letting him know. Yeah, all of this is now, yeah. And everyone in the courthouse. Is there anyone else in addition to courthouse or sheriff's office, just all that? We'll do.
Thank you.
All right, then, let's just answer our, Mr. Report. All right. If you will pardon me a moment to gather up all of the necessary materials. So this will be, this will be an interactive session. Good morning, everyone, happy last meeting in March. Are we ready? Okay, here we go with the first item, which is the tentative approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget. In order to bring some order to this process, here will be the run of show. I have eight folders with budget sheets in them and we will take them in order to ensure that all signature pages get signed and returned appropriately. I will start by giving the first round of folders to Commissioner Stone, who will then pass it to Commissioner Smith, who will then pass it to Commissioner Thomas, on which we, I will pick them up and we will continue in a circle in that fashion. And at this point in time, then, I humbly request that the commission make a motion to approve the tentative or tentatively approve the budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, that they will be presented here shortly with.
At this time, I move that we approve tentatively the fiscal year twenty-four to twenty-five county budget.
Second.
Commissioner for a second to tentatively approve the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Sten?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, and we will begin with our county agricultural agent. And I have all the signature pages and everything indicated where people need to sign. But in addition, Commissioner Smith, President Smith, there is the signature for the agreement, the annual agreement that we do with the, that is needed by David. Yeah, I can take this back, thank you very much.
Fifty days for all your hard work on the budget and all the other elected officials are all about it. It takes an hour.
Yes. And the reason this is tentatively approved is later by having, uh, is because we still have to send it down to the state and then they will let us off on it and then they'll send it back to us and then we can.
Not on wood.
They have to look, go through and look at the management.
It was a process, I would say that a huge priority in this budget is salaries for our county employees. We really worked hard to put the fence into the paper. Proud to say that we were able to bring every county employee up to thirty thousand dollars. So if a county employee is not making thirty thousand, that's the standard, that is starting rate across the board.
Now, I should say, if we can give the elected officials that money into their line item, we would hope that they respect that and give their great employees up how we would like them to be.
Also, until the officers that was thirty-five thousand are starting positions, employees in the sheriffs department up to forty-seven thousand. And there was just, looked at a three percent across the board for all county employees that were not seeing that increase in their salaries, is how we budgeted that. So employee salaries were definitely priorities, so you can always meet with us individually. We're stopping the office if you have additional questions about that, but priorities were definitely a salary for our, for our employees, it's been a long time coming.
And that takes us to the signature pages for the sheriffs and tax office, and there are four here. One for the sheriff's tax office, one for courthouse security, one for the K-9, and one for the litter control. And to respond to your question, we've got a high copy delivered by me. You can also have a digital version of the entire budget and your specific claims you saw request.
Your grandkids coming?
Doing well. Still growing in ICU, one of them, Mary's still growing in ICU.
I was in the ICU for six months around there.
I'm hoping a couple of weeks. She's going down.
That's great. We have all the time in the world because there are these babies. Mr. Ray, there's.
Yes, sir.
Should I say Dr. Ray?
Uh, unnecessary.
At least at the time. Thank you. You. That then takes us to folder number three, the lucky orange, which we will call the courts packet, which includes the circuit clerk, the circuit court, as well as the magistrate, so there are three sheets here. You sure am I, it ends like that, is that? I shouldn't have looked that up, I shouldn't have ordered that. That actually takes us to the fourth folder, which is the assessor. And this is just a single page. That takes us to the county clerk's office where we have two. Yes. Where we have two pages is the county clerk's page and then the county clerk operations. That takes us to folder six, which is the prosecuting attorney, there is only one page. Beautiful, that takes us to the penultimate folder, which will be OEM and nine-one-one, of which there will be five signature pages. OEM, nine-one-one, nine-one-one capital outlay, mapping and addressing, and then the central garage. And to move things along for us now, I will start with Commissioner Stone on the last packet, which is the county commission packet, and it has a significant number of sheets. It's the county commission sheet, the custodial maintenance signature page, the dog warden, data processing, parks recreation, arts and humanities, and education. If the commission and others will indulge me, I will go ahead and give a very brief facilities update, since our facility supervisor is recovering from the flu, as the commissioner assigned. Since Kevin is still out with the flu, here is the quick update. The voltage issue with the chiller seems to be under control for now, but there is an issue with the controls to the chiller. This will begin and will be addressed after the current trial finishes, which we are hoping will be this week, so that we'll be able to get in there because we do not want something to go down with everybody. The way it is, given our luck. So that will commence next week and should be able to be finished within four days. Each of you should have a copy in your inbox from earlier this morning and just recently of the documents for the pre-bid meeting from the Mills Group. The first set of documents that you receive were the more technical instructions and diagrams. The second one is the product manual, and that was forwarded to you just now via my cellphone. So please, if someone didn't get that, let me know.
No, I'll make sure to send it.
I'll send it from the computer, just in case. And that brings us to the fact that we will be holding our mandatory pre-bid meeting for the courthouse reconfiguration project a week from today, April second, here in this very room at nine a.m., which takes me to the next item in my report, which is the idea that we will need to therefore move next week's meeting to Wednesday, April third. And a question about that particular meeting with the commissioners is, would it be acceptable if that meeting, just like this meeting, started at ten-thirty? Is there any objection to any one of the commissioners for starting that at ten-thirty? Okay, then we will make that effective ten-thirty, so that will be, the commission meeting next week will be April third at ten-thirty a.m. to accommodate this mandatory pre-bid meeting that we will be having on April second, which we are being told should be hopefully greatly attended. We're getting a lot of interest, so that's fantastic. And I believe that concludes the signing portion of the program, so thank you all very much for all of that. Yeah, we will change all that sort of stuff, that, yep, I will be texting Angie as we speak. That takes us to the final budget revision that we have. After a meeting with the prosecuting attorney last week, it became clear that to attract the type of legality needed for the increasing caseload on our prosecutor, that an expansion in terms of the salaries for assistant prosecutors was needed. These have already been accounted for in the budget for next fiscal year. However, to be able to attract the replacement for the recent assistant prosecuting attorney that we've lost, we are in the, in the position of needing to raise that salary currently, and so that is what this budget revision seeks to do here. What that does is that increases the salaries for all assistant prosecutors to at least eighty thousand dollars a year. Again, as I said, since we've already accommodated for this in the upcoming budget, this budget revision is needed to bring the salary levels up to that amount for the remainder of this fiscal year. Without boring you with the details on the line item and stuff, I want to read is, the entire budget revision is two thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars, which will come out of our contributions, and that will be spent along the following lines. For salaries, one thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars, one hundred and forty-four dollars for FICA, and a hundred and sixty-nine dollars for retirement. And that will run out for the remainder of the time period we have. I have confirmed with the prosecuting attorney that an offer has been made and accepted for the replacement at the salary so discussed, and so we will be whole effectively as of May first. And so with that, I request a motion from the commission to approve all budget revisions as previously prevented, if that would be so interesting and fine.
Second.
Second. Motion for a second to approve all the budget revisions that's been presented to us today. Commissioner Sten?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. Excellent, that takes us to the final item that became a necessary item because of, and this is the EMS funding. And so what we learned late yesterday afternoon was that it was permissible and it was actually put into action by Marshall County that their volunteer EMS services could be paid out of the salary enhancement. And so on the request of the commission beforehand, it was suggested that we draft up some type of document. So the language on that document, which I will. up some type of document, so the language on that document, which I will read right now, reads as follows, pursuant to the terms of sixty-four C S R one-sixteen, the distribution of EMS salary enhancement funds, EMS S E F, is in the amount of, and this is where we will include the amount for each EMS, to each EMS, is made by the present county commissions in accordance with, again, the name of the EMS agency, responding to whatever percentage of the calls made during the two thousand twenty-three calendar year, and I have those statistics, and I will read shortly. By endorsing below, the name of the EMS agency, agrees to use the EMS S E F funds solely for the purpose of financial enhancement of employees or volunteers designated as, quote, active emergency medical service personnel, end quote, as defined in sixty-four C R S one-sixteen, that is the draft language that I put together from cultivating, from, you know, calling from several different sources, some were more legalistic and others that were more stipulative, uh, you have to make this many runs, you get this much money per run, uh, it was recommended by the commission that we not include such laborious and micromanaging type details, um, and so that, to give the EMS eight organizations themselves the greatest latitude with that, this would be the appropriate language, uh, the statistics and the amounts go as follows, camp responded to sixty-seven point nine-seven percent of responses in two thousand twenty-three, and they will each go two decimal places because that's the figure that we got from, uh, nine-one-one that I received from Justin, and that comes to, you remember, the total amount we're taking percentages out of here is one hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-one forty, and all of this will be available to our friends in the media too, as soon as they text me or email me or remind me, uh, eighty-five thousand three hundred and fifty-seven sixty-eight, Taralto responded to nineteen point zero four percent of the responses to a total of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and ten seventy cents, Brewston, ten point eight percent, for an amount of thirteen thousand five hundred and sixty-two seventy-nine, Union, one point three percent, for one thousand six hundred and thirty-two fifty-six, and Rollsburg at point eight-nine percent, for one thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-seven cents, if, um, at this point, I ask the commission if this language is appropriate.
What was that first amount?
The eighty-five thousand three hundred and fifty-seven sixty-eight, and you should have that in your packet as the last document and the breakdown.
All right.
Um, the, the change that would need to go to the document you see is on the right side at the bottom, there would be a place for a signator from the county commission that can either be designated as myself or any one of the commissioners, whatever you all see fit, so I would, commission president, sounds perfect, so with that, I will make the changes, I will send that out, once that is approved by the commission as saying, you know, Nathan, this is good, let's move forward on that, the actual amount will be sent to each individual EMS for their signature to respond, and then we will get vouchers created and all that stuff, and checks should be ready to go next week. Sound good?
And like we promised you, one page.
Yeah. So we're like five.
And like I said, sorry for the, sorry for the delay, he, he did not get a good answer from the state until yesterday.
My own lease is less than some of the other, and I was like, seriously, really? So that's kind of funny, um, and that, thankfully, includes my report, and now, since the budget is done, I will be able to shape and look like not what I look like now, which will be good for everybody, uh, so I thank you all very much for your time.
All right, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I need to go into effective session for legal matters on the Brett School property.
I'll second that.
I, relation floor, second, good, next session, Commissioner.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm gonna go, I got a lot of string.
Wait, that will be there.
So you walk in and do the.
Oh, let's do that, well, let's.
Hey, let's, let's connect in the session.